I have been. Okay, hold on.
We need to let him know, yeah.
Second?
Yep.
All right, you're on.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to open the meeting at seven thirty-eight.
So motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote unanimously.
Aye.
Okay, first up is, yeah, and we'll get you out of here.
My name's Michael Crowe. I am looking to get sign-offs to construct two houses on number ten and number eleven Pecker Lane.
Okay.
Need the board's signature on my sign-in sheets for the building inspector.
You ready for the motion?
Yep, make a motion. Need a motion.
Make a motion to sign off on ten and eleven?
Yes.
Pecker Lane. We're all familiar with the, uh...
We've been there.
House lots yet?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, vote unanimously. Aye. Okay.
Actually, he only needs one appointment. Camera can do it, yeah.
There you go. All said.
Yeah. Good night.
Your turn.
Okay. What else do we have?
Nothing until seven forty-five, and then it's SD.
We have, is everybody here for SD way?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, we'll just take a break then until seven forty-five, five minutes, turn a muzak on. A little rock and roll, huh, maybe, AC/DC, Guns N' Roses.
Walter's gonna be a half hour or so late, so...
You're live.
Okay, want to do a continuance of the SD way subdivision?
Motion to open the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Vote unanimously.
Is the new engineer here from...
Yes, Brian Murray is here.
Could you introduce yourself and...
Sure. My name's Brian Murray from Millennium Engineering. It's on my fire.
Oh, you're gonna start them.
So, ah, okay.
Thank you. So we were last before you many weeks ago. We were scheduled to be before you on January nineteenth for continuation of the hearing. We appreciate your indulgence in allowing our continuance. We've been working with the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program to address a few concerns that they had with the project. Not so much concerns as issues they wanted to address with respect to a portion of the site. We wanted to be sure that we had satisfied their concerns before we came back before the board in the event that there were planned modifications that resulted from those discussions. Indeed, there were planned modifications, relatively minor modifications, but modifications nonetheless, and so we have made those modifications. We've updated the plans accordingly. Brian submitted the revised plans to Peter Williams late last week. My understanding is he's had an opportunity to review them, so I'm gonna give him an opportunity to present the changes to the plans. You can allow Peter to give you an update on his review. There is a bit of additional correspondence. It's been submitted. A letter from Brian dated January twenty-ninth that summarizes these changes, a response letter from Peter dated January thirty-first. And I also believe that since we were last before you, you have a letter from the fire chief with whom I corresponded earlier today, just to confirm that there were no additional comments or concerns of his. There are not. The letter that he drafted dated January eighteenth indicates that per the requirements of the subdivision regulations, we've conducted a review of the subdivision plans submitted for an extension of SD's way. After reviewing said plans and the associated waiver requests, we have no comments or changes to the plans as submitted to the board for approval. He does note in the next paragraph, "There has been some discussion relative to the maintenance of cisterns in the subdivision. I would like to know what the plans are to keep full and clear of any obstructions at all times, similar to how we treat hydrants." And my understanding is that my client, and Brian can probably address this too, has been in discussion to DPW about the ongoing maintenance. So I'll allow Brian to introduce the changes to the project since the last time we were before you and address any questions the board might have.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Again, my name's Brian Murray from Millennium Engineering. Just quickly, I also have revised plans with me. These would be what would be considered the final plans. These are based on Peter's review of our January twenty-ninth submittal. He had two comments on that submittal to him. We've revised the plans to incorporate those two comments, so I will submit them right after to the board and to Peter as soon as I go through the changes that are resulting on the subdivision. As Adam mentioned, we are making changes due to Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. In general, the, uh, the changes all occur out into the back portion of the, of the site, essentially lots five and six out here. What we had to do is slightly adjust the property lines for five and six in this area here.
Can we, can we just kinda tilt that somehow, some way, so the camera picks it up and also on the audience?
They can see it up there.
Yeah, we wanna see it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You can see it on TV.
Good? Is that good, right there? Okay, all right. What you've seen before from this subdivision is essentially still there. What we have done is just modified some of the property lines out in the back here of the property, as well as we had to revise some property lines of the abutting lots in here in order to maintain area on these lots. What's going on is we need to create a migration corridor for an endangered turtle out there. What the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program wants us to do is limit development in the back of the subdivision in this area here to allow the turtles to go back through undeveloped land. Prior, these lots stuck out a little bit more up into this area over here, so we've reduced the back portion of the lot, widened it out a little bit here on it, and had to, in order to maintain area for the properties, we slightly adjusted the property lines for this lot and this lot in here and as well as this one. And those are just very minor adjustments to the property lines in this area. Again, we're just looking to maintain the required frontage and areas for lots and for this subdivision. As part of that, we also had to slightly adjust the septic, proposed septic locations for lots five and six out here, in this location here and in this location here. With these new property lines in here, we still have to maintain ten-foot offsets to property lines for septic systems, for septic fields and such. Maintain offsets from proposed wells for these lots, so we had to slightly move this proposed septic field here and here. In order to make sure that there's still viable areas on it, we performed additional test pits for these new locations on it. They all, the materials look good as part of the, the test pits that were done on it, so we believe they're viable septic locations out here. And in essence, that's the majority of the changes. It all, they all occurred right in this area and right over in here, and then just slight adjustments to the property lines down there. Roadway stays the same, drainage stays the same, with the exception of we slightly adjusted this detention basin. This used to stick out a little bit more this way, so in order to try to maintain this corridor, we pushed it up this way, tightened it up in this area. That required us to also do another test pit for, to make sure that the soils underneath this infiltration basin are capable of supporting the design, and they are. We went in, did a test pit in there, found some really good material in here, particularly for infiltration basins. So from an engineering point of view, we think we've resolved the issue of trying to maintain this corridor through here. Just so everyone's aware, this property also extends farther out to the back here. This corridor is gonna go along the entire portion of that back property on it. That's about it for the changes.
Do we identify the proposed easement area?
Yeah, we're coming. You see this shaded area right in here? That will be the easement area on it. We have it hatched all through here on it, going right down to here, to the back here, so this and here will be all undeveloped land on it.
And so what Brian means by that, and this is not necessarily a matter with which I suspect the board will be all that concerned, but it is something we are going to continue to work with Natural Heritage about and we're required to, is Natural Heritage wants a restriction, conservation restriction of sorts, over the portion of property that they intend or requiring that we preserve for the purposes of this migration. So they have provided their standard form to us. We're in the process of reviewing that. It will be negotiating that with them, and ultimately there'll be an easement plan or restriction plan put on record with the Registry of Deeds, together with a written restriction that identifies the area that'll be restricted in perpetuity to be undeveloped land. It was never, certainly the Bauxford land was never an area that we intended to develop as part of the subdivision anyway, but now there'll be a permanent restriction on it per Natural Heritage.
Will they be putting up the granite markings with a little plaque on it? We ran into that problem on Stonebridge, and the people didn't look at their plan to see it was a natural mitigation for the turtles and stuff.
I know that, and I haven't, I, to be entirely honest, I just received the, the proposed form of easement a day ago from Natural Heritage, but I've worked with Natural Heritage and other projects in the past, and so I know their standard form, which has been updated a number of times over the years, does now include boundary markers. I don't believe it specifies that they need to be granite, but it does specify that there be some sort of marking to provide notice to anybody who might be in the general area that this is an area that's subject to a restriction.
I think with that, I'll also provide the board with, uh, these are the latest and greatest plans that just respond to Peter's comments.
Is it over and above what we got the other day?
It's, it's very similar to it, but it does, two questions Peter had on it was...
Maybe I could explain it first.
Yeah, sure, would you like to?
I, I did go over the, oops, Peter Williams of GCA. I did go over the plans, and I, it was, as I say, there wasn't, there's no real change to the roadway design in any way. It's just the rear septic systems and the drainage system and the lot lines that have changed to culminate the easement. But I just saw that in, you know, updating the plans that they had left off, we initially asked in the last set of revisions that provide a access gate for the fence around the detention basin, and they left that off by accident. And I also felt that we, to be, make sure that we got the proper soils within the detention area, that the plan clearly state that they have to remove all the insubtle, well, the insubtle and less than sandy soils between the bottom and the basin, so that they get the infiltration that they're counting for on the design. Those are basically two small details on the plans, and I'm sure they probably have caught those on this revised plans, but we will check those. And I guess my only other question, would, would, would the, would you be providing copies of the easement to the board after it's finalized, so that we have a clear understanding of the boundaries?
Yes, we'll provide the board with a copy of the final, we'll provide the board with a copy of the final restriction, together with a restriction plan that'll go on record indicating the location. It'll be similar, if not identical, to the, the hatched area here, but we'll provide both of those documents to the board once they're finalized and approved by Natural Heritage.
Key thing, George, is every person you sell a house to, I want you to emphasize all the boundaries and the markers and what's there, because we ran into that before with a lot of neighbors that moved in, and they didn't know anything about the no cut, no build, and they need to be explained personally.
It'll be on their, um, it'll be on their plot plan, and it's also...
A lot of them didn't even look at that or read it.
Well, it should be, you should run with the deed because, you know, that, that's the whole thing, and I mean, when they...
It doesn't record it after the...
Right, I mean, the, the challenge will be, it'll, it'll go to record as prior to, I imagine, the conveyance of even the first lot, but to the extent that it's encumbering one, two, three, four lots in the subdivision, it's not gonna be in the chain of title necessarily to the other three lots. If you go back, it'll be in the chain of title to a larger parcel.
I'd like to see a letter that they have to sign at purchase and sale and say that they've read that and knew it.
It is included, it is included in their purchase and sale. When they sign a purchase sale, there's a letter, if they have restrictions on their lot, saying so, and they do sign that.
That they were told and they signed, okay.
I agree.
Well, we, we want a copy of it. We don't, we don't care which one. It, it should be the same for all of them. We, we would need a copy.
The lots that are impacted, correct?
Yeah, because one of the problems is we, we had a developer wanna do something and forgot to tell the first four homeowners, you know, that was gonna be the situation. Put it in their deeds after the fact, and we had a lot of problems, and we don't wanna get back into that stuff whatsoever at all. Our, our other problem's gonna be, we haven't got the time to run down there and make sure everything's being done, so that if, if National Heritage is gonna walk that land, they find something's up and all that, well, they can take them to task. But that's why we wanted in the deed, and we'd like a copy of that deed, okay?
Yep.
All right.
All right. Peter, the decision that you emailed us and we have here, everything's kosher from what I understand.
All right, I can say, I looked, I, you know, looked at the past decisions and all the, you know, issues discussed during this. I think I captured everything. I certainly want the board to, you know, double-check my work, but...
Yeah, I've, I've read it. It looks good.
I had one question. Will the execution of the easement with Natural Heritage Endangered Species programs stop you from going forward with construction? Or as long as you stay out of that area, you can go forward with the work?
Brian, you can answer this and correct me if I'm wrong. They have to sign off on our, our SWIP permit.
That's, that's, that's correct.
So we need, we need a stormwater prevention permit, and in order for us to proceed with that permit, we have to, they have to approve the easement, and it needs to be recorded, and I believe that they look for proof that it's been recorded, book and page.
That's correct.
Right, to them signing off on the permit.
Thank you.
When you do start, what's the build-out time, and how many houses do you plan on starting on?
I don't have the answer on the houses, but the road contractor and I have discussed a sixty-day time period to get the binder on.
Five years.
Excuse me?
Oh, you said sixty.
Sixty days.
Oh, sixty days, okay.
Yep.
But completion, how many, what do you think?
I anticipate between eighteen and thirty months.
I just wanna state, in the interest of full disclosure, I, I spoke with Peter over the course of the past few weeks relative to the waiver request. You might recall that the board had voted those requests at the last meeting. As we began to incorporate those waiver requests into the decision, I recognized two things. The first was that, you might recall, one of the waivers that was discussed with the board was this waiver that referenced the Massachusetts State Plane Coordinate System datum. And Taylor had explained that there's a requirement that NAD eighty-three be used, but the coordinate system that had been used in the plans was different. We talked about submitting the appropriate datum electronically to the town. Well, I went back to review each of these waivers as we were reviewing the decision and couldn't find that anywhere in your subdivision rules and regulations, couldn't find any reference to the State Plane Coordinate System, and surely enough, it's not in there. I spoke with Taylor subsequently, and he thought that maybe it was a carryover from a, from a, another town's plan that he had used as a, as a form basis for the, the waiver request. So we've deleted that request altogether from the, the list of, of waivers that were included in the decision. I also identified, I think, three separate areas where there were incorrect section references, so the substance of the waiver that the board voted and we discussed was entirely correct, but the reference was wrong. So in one case, I think it was three point four point one point eight, and the correct reference was three point four point eighteen. So I corrected those references just so there's, there's a better ability to cross-reference what the decision says with your actual regulation. So the substance is the same. I don't think there's a need for the board to walk through those waivers again, but I just want that to be on the record, that when the board votes a decision, it's voting them with those correction waivers. Thanks.
All right, so you need a motion to accept the decision?
I make a motion. I want, I need a motion to accept the decision.
So motion?
Second.
And it's February second decision.
Okay, this is the final decision.
Right, yeah. All those in favor?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote unanimously. All right. What's next?
Thank you very much.
Well, we gotta get signatures on it. Is there some form involved?
No. What do you wanna do? Are you gonna go record the, you're gonna do the MyLabs?
We have to sign.
Yeah, we'll do the MyLabs after the appeal period.
Well, that's right.
Right.
Do that, we'll bring in MyLabs.
That's the decision. You're gonna need to record this at the town clerk, you're the time stamp, and start the appeal period.
Right, so will you be recording that tomorrow with the town clerk?
No, you will be.
Yeah, that's why we'll sign it now.
Right.
We got my date on this. I'm gonna put a date to it, too.
Yep, put it down there, yep. There is a date on the first page, but...
Date on this page, okay.
You'll check it all out afterward.
And just, just to let the board know that I did check to make sure they made those changes.
Okay.
That his plans submitted.
All right. All right, I mean, that seemed like strange coming in, boom, right after we got the other ones.
Yeah, it was just the timing, you know, and appreciate Peter's help in, uh, bringing that around quickly on it.
Just, just so the abutters know that we got a complete set of pan, plans, just like you see over there, came in a few days ago. So that's what I put out here, and they're making other changes.
Should we make a copy or sign two?
It's relative to this National Heritage.
We could sign two. You, you got a copy too, right? Same one I had.
I was surprised that in the beginning, that something like this didn't jump up because of, you know, that closeness to the Parker River, which is a river and isn't a river. Which is a river and isn't a river. But, you know, it's just, there had to be something down there that was going to become a problem. But surprised it took this long. All right, why don't you, why don't you start over what you were just saying?
Just said that- We've been going back and forth with Mesa, the Mesa Review Engineers, is that the correct title?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
Feverishly over the past several weeks, trying to come to an agreement on the easement area in trying to satisfy their request versus, you know, keeping the plan largely the same other than, you know, a few minor adjustments in order to satisfy their request for the easement area. They sent a, I believe, a biologist down to, to see if there was a salamander or a turtle that existed. I believe that they didn't find it, but they said that this would be a good habitat for it. If it ever did come through, it would want a path to walk through the backyards of lot, I believe, five, six, seven, and eight.
So you didn't really find turtles per se?
I believe it's even the spotted salamander that they're concerned about, potentially.
No blending turtles.
Blading turtles was one of the things that they were looking for, but I don't think they found any. But there was no mention of being within proximity of the Parker River. It was all about the, the, they put this land, I don't know how it is, how it's done, but-
Really just related to migration, potential migration. Not so much the habitat of the endangered species that's allowing them to move. So these areas seem to be getting bigger and bigger.
Well, that's, that's the whole thing. We lost a huge part of the town's industrial zone due to the blending turtles. The state ended up buying it. So it kind of lacks our revenues down there, you know? It's-
I'm William Cook, Tennessee way in Groveland. And so where are we in the process tonight? Where is, I'm hearing appeals and stuff like that. There's an appeal period. Has this been signed off on tonight? Is this the final meeting? Because I'm still meeting with Mr. Hazleton here, and we've been talking back and forth, trying to set up a buffer zone and all that. We haven't come to a final agreement yet, and I want to make it part of the record.
I've been speaking with, you know, Mr. Cook on giving him a buffer zone, I believe, on Lot 8. And we are, we've been going back and forth. I think I've given you the 20 feet that you've asked for. We spoke today about how restrictive the language would be with the future customer in Lot 8 could do with that area there right now. In our current agreement that we put forward, it was a limit of cut zone. So if someone had come in there and removed some of the trees, they'd have to replace them with like-kind coniferous trees. So Mr. Cook has asked me to consider something more restrictive. And I explained to him that over the next few days, I was going to discuss it, you know, with, you know, my engineer to see what we could possibly do there. And this is all, you know, by and large regarding the fence that the cooks have that are, that's on the subdivision property that we're going to give them an exclusive use easement, so they can maintain, you know, their fence. And I believe there's a small, is it a shed or a?
It's a kids' floor.
Kids' floor? So my, I'm confident that, you know, over the next few days, you know, we'll be able to come to an agreement, you know, on something for them.
So after you come to an agreement on this, you're gonna do like a lot line change or?
I'm not, no, I don't think we're gonna do a lot line change. We're gonna do more, probably an easement and-
And then record that as-
And then record that. But that's going to be a private agreement between Mr. Cook and I, or the SDA Realty Trust.
Before, before we walk out the door, I just spoke to Peter about a couple of blanks that I saw, noticed in the decision. Maybe you noticed them too, that ought to be completed before we record a copy.
Amount of bond money and stuff.
Well, one's the insurance and the other is just a date for the previously approved subdivision plan. Neither Peter nor I had the date that you approved the original preliminary subdivision plan that was submitted to you. I don't know if you have that in your records. We can certainly find it and write it in before we record it with the town clerk, if we have your permission to do that. We just have to dig through our files to get it. But it's a matter of public record anyway. But the other condition is on page two. It's condition number eight that just speaks to the amount of general liability insurance on the development. And there's a blank there as to what the sum-
That's what I emailed you, George.
And I sent you a copy.
Right, and then Denise got that, yes, for the million dollar indemnity.
It was one million dollars, so-
Well, one and two, I think it's one million dollar each occurrence and two million dollar aggregate.
Yeah.
And that's been already provided to you.
Yes.
So if the board wishes to write in two million aggregate-
Write in the bond, yeah.
To write in two million aggregate there, that'll, that'll allow us to record it.
Well, why don't, he wants us to write it.
Do you need dates on the preliminary at all, or?
I, I do, but it sounds as if I have the board's permission to write it in once we find it. I mean, it's just, it's, it's less a substantive issue for the decision and more just to keep the trail. So when we were last before the board for the approval, I don't have that date.
Well, there was six dates, and the last one was 2/3/15.
I haven't got it with me, what the amount was.
Imagine that's when we accepted the preliminary.
We could write that in as well.
Okay, I mean, I can look through the minutes if you want and then call you. Why don't you just give me your phone number, you know, just write it down and I'll call you.
Sure.
So there's two lines on this. So the one line will be one million?
It's just writing it out and then actually putting the dollar amount next to the symbol.
So just one million, though?
It's, you can either write one million or two million aggregate, because it's two million aggregate or one per occurrence.
Okay. How do you do that?
All right.
And I'm gonna send that to you ahead of time, because Millennium's gonna certify the bond on person.
Excuse me. I, so I, I still didn't. We had to move on to other stuff I was still talking about. We, we moved on to other stuff, but I was still talking about my issue. And my issue is, we haven't got, we haven't, we don't have an agreement signed yet. And I know we're working together, and I think we can come up with an agreement. The concerns I have, and it's the same type of stuff you've seen with the planning board in the past, something that says no cut zone or limited cut zone means limited cut zone. So you know that 30-year-old tree, if someone decides to cut it, they're gonna go put a 10-foot tree up that I'm gonna wait, I'll be dead by the time it ends up filling in that area again. So I'm trying to make it more of a no disturb zone, and I'm also trying to control that area a little bit. As we know, and we've discussed this in the past, and you've seen it happen, some of these places that you don't have any control over end up having an issue later on. And I, and, and we're all in here saying, well, why did that happen? If I had more control over it, then it won't happen. So that, I, I just, I, I, you know, I know this is pushing forward and it's happening, but I'd like to try to have this as part of the record before everything gets documented, that it's a piece of the, a piece of the package here for the subdivision. And how, and if, and if this doesn't go, go the way I believe it should, how long of an appeal time do I have to appeal this?
21 days.
21 days?
When we register it with the town clerk? I mean, where are you guys on this thing? I mean, are you willing to leave something alone that's standing there right now?
Absolutely, you know.
Well, can you put that in writing to him?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, again, I, in my defense, I, you know, I-
We were talking about it this morning.
Yeah.
And in my defense, over the past several months, I've been trying to get in touch with you several times, trying to push this forward, and I know that we're still working things out. So I haven't been ignoring the issue or been laxadaisical on it in any way whatsoever. Now that I think I have a semblance of what Mr. Cook is willing to accept. I told him that in good faith, that over the next few days, I'm just going to work with the engineer to, to get this done for them. You know, because I do want to make them satisfied and comfortable as possible. Bear in mind, you know, I feel like I've, I've stuck out the olive branch, and I'm really, I'm really trying to make this work. You know, the fact that he's got, you know, a fence on our property and a buffer zone, I don't need to do. But I'm, I'm, I'm working as hard as I can to make sure that I feel like that they're comfortable. I just had the conversation this morning. I wasn't prepared, or I wasn't even able to get the, you know, to work with my engineer today to get it done before the meeting, because it was 8:30 or 9 o'clock in the morning when I was on the way to work. And, but over the next few days, I'm gonna work hard to get them a draft of something that they can live with.
Once that's done, once that's signed, we'd like a copy of that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, I mean, we, we've got one subdivision that's being built right now. It was approved back in 2008, and what was granted to the abutters was the 30-foot. No bill, no cut zone, okay? And recently, the new developer gave another 10 feet. And, you know, of course, it's just simply, just to keep them kind of like off their backs and everything and be the good neighbor and everything. Not asking to do more, but if, you know, what he wants to do is keep them a mature tree. That's not hard to do.
Absolutely, and I said to him this morning that we're gonna look at putting something more restrictive in place. I'm not willing to do a lot line adjustment and give him that land, because I do think that it does serve a purpose for that lot, even if it's their own privacy from the cooks. But I am willing to do something more restrictive in nature that they feel comfortable with. So, I mean, like I said, I just had this conversation this morning.
There is a 21-day appeal period. If that's not done within that time span and, you know, the thing starts again, you know, comes back up.
I understand.
Yeah, it's, it seems like a real simple thing to do. Okay?
I agree.
Just, just to elaborate on Homestead, when he was talking about the 30-foot, we actually made them do a covenant on that 30-foot and record that separately above and beyond the, the final decision for the subdivision. That could be done too, and I believe Taylor was involved in that to write that covenant for that 30-foot.
Well, that, I mean, that largely is what's being discussed. And, you know, to sort of, to sort of echo what, what Georgia said, we, we've been at this. And I understand it's been a difficult time of year for everyone. You know, we've been working on this through the holidays. We've had meetings with the board through the holidays. But we've been working on this. I, we had conversations outside this room on November 9th, and we were before you three meetings ago. So we've been working on this. A component of that agreement is to put an easement agreement together that would formalize the, the interest that's being, being conveyed to the cooks, so.
All right, so it behooves you to finish that up before the 21 days, because they'll appeal it.
It does, we've been working on it, we're trying to get there.
Yeah.
I'll see if I can find that covenant that was filed at Homestead. I'll shoot you a copy of that when I come up with the, all right. Okay. Any other questions at this point in time?
No, they're gonna file, but after the appeal period, then Brian comes back with the MyLars, right?
That's correct.
Our intention at that time too is to provide the, I think we're going to a letter of credit and a certified amount by Peter. So I'm working with Millennium to get them the bids from the, from the site guys, road guys, have them certify it, do their own calculations. Peter obviously is going to look at that and approve it, adjust it and approve it as necessary. And then hopefully, by the time we come in to sign the MyLars, we'll have that ready for you at that meeting.
Make sure we get a copy of that estimate too on all the individual-
I would assume that once, soon as Peter signs off on it, that he's gonna send you a copy for review.
Yeah, submit something to me.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Do we know the date that that might be, that meeting would be at?
We're meeting on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. So our next meeting will be the third Tuesday of this month, and then-
So we, the, the appeal period will, will not have passed by the third Tuesday of this month, because it's only to reach from today. But the first Tuesday of March would be March 1st. And the appeal period will have passed by that date if we make our, if we make our filing with the town clerk tomorrow.
Everything's kosher, give me a call before the weekend, so I can post it.
Okay.
She's not open on Fridays, so.
Right.
So you need a motion to close the hearing, or?
Okay.
Motion to close the hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Voted unanimous. You're in close.
Thank you.
Missed all the fun. What happened?
Hearing's closed.
Okay. That's all? And you got all new plans stamped with the new guy? And you got a full briefing as why Taylor's not here? No? Okay, so when's that gonna happen? What's so funny?
Is this in background?
Signed off on two homes on Pecor.
No, I mean, why is everybody laughing?
No, nothing.
All right, no, I mean, the, on the, who stamped the plans?
Oh, Millennium, Chris York from Millennium.
Chris York, okay. So, and why was, why is Taylor not here?
Taylor no longer works for Millennium.
Right, got that, but why?
It's personal, don't, don't bring it up.
Oh. Okay. So who took over the plans, Chris?
Chris and I are working on it. Yeah, Millennium's Brian Murray.
Yeah, Brian's-
Sorry.
Brian's done a lot of, Brian's done a lot of work for the town.
You're working?
Yeah, I worked for Millennium, I have in the past, I've worked on physical projects and-
Worked on the town, okay.
Yeah, and many of the towns.
Okay, so you closed the hearing. We didn't vote on the, on this, did you?
We voted in the final decision. It's gonna be put up for the, you got a copy in front of you?
No, I got nothing. So, so you voted in the full decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's done.
All right, so if I have questions and editorials, I'll submit them?
Daylight and dollars short. Well, you, you know, it's almost 8:30. We started this thing at 7:35.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Okay. All right, well, I'll submit my, my questions and feedback, because I do have questions. Okay.
Yeah, so there's nothing else on the agenda.
How are you? All right.
Vote to adjourn. Next meeting is-
No, no, I got, I got, I got-
Oh, you got more?
I got the nuts.
All right, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, I have two sets of minutes to approve. First one is-
Who's briefcase, Peter? That's not yours, is it?
Uh, that's probably Brian's. He still has the board here.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Got the minutes of January 12th and the minutes of January 19th to approve. Need a motion and a second.
So motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. One, 19. And one 12, 16. Okay, anything else to come before the meeting tonight? Now, we did not hear from across the street, correct?
Right, they didn't come in.
They did not come in, okay.
You said Pecor Lane for A&amp;Rs?
Two homes, yes.
Was that?
Buying them off of the Ogden and Larry.
Who did them, the same guys just before?
Who, who did them? The same guys as before?
I forget his name, but he's signed in now.
Crowe, that's his name, Crowe, Michael Crowe.
Yeah, I think he's, I think he's a builder in Georgetown, from Georgetown.
And did they complete everything on, on that street fund? Remember, they were gonna do those?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's all paved.
All right, any, anything else before the board tonight? Uh, would Knight was gonna come in with an amended plan, correct?
No, I met with him, with the MyLars, and come to find out his engineer didn't draw the line properly for that excess land, so now he's gonna set up another appointment with us for a new MyLars showing the driveways and also showing the proper line for that excess land at the top of his property. So he'll be back in later on that.
Okay.
We're still waiting for Sunset Circle to bring his recorded plans, and I emailed him his bond for five hundred and fourteen thousand that he's working on.
We also never got back the M O D on that, right, the filing?
Right, he's gonna record everything.
Right, now, I cannot find S T Parks recorded an M O D. I had a copy, you know, from the town clerk, but I don't have the recorded one.
I have to check.
So, I mean, that's...
You're talking, Eric Harper's one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we got Harper and Sunset Circle. All right, anything else to come before the board tonight?
Yeah, what, what else was covered? Other than this, on the, on this subdivision?
Well, just the sign-off on the two lots on Packer Lane.
Yeah, no, I mean, what was different on this one?
Well, it, it's basically the, it's National Heritage wanted a...
Access way for the turtles.
Yeah, what they call it.
Yeah.
Migration corridor for turtles and salamanders.
Yeah, I saw that in the...
But the reality is, they didn't even find any. But they think there may be some
Back there.
Back there, and they need that. So they added that. That's, that was it.
In the la, the land that's over in Boxford, on the backside of that, where's that going? Do you figure that out?
Where does it go?
No, I mean, what are they gonna do with it?
I don't know, it's Boxford. I mean, I, I think there's a circle back there that there were houses back in Boxford near there. So they may come in off of that circle.
Now, did they cut off this parcel and leave that piece in, in Boxford, or is this a still, still a two-town? 'Cause if it's still on two-town, they need two-town approval.
No, it's only, it's in Groveland only.
Right, but did they, did they cut the land off?
Yeah, I think that's what he told us.
That's what I was trying, yeah.
It should, it should show.
Yeah, 'cause I, I asked him what they were doing with it, but I didn't get a real answer on that. Maybe they didn't know at the time I asked him.
Yeah.
Yeah, this piece here. Boxer.
Ready for a motion to close one?
Yeah, there's no, it still shows it in here, so are they gonna go to Boxer?
I think that's what they intended all along.
Okay, to go to Boxer to get their approval?
Yep.
Okay. And these, these are the waivers we approved last time, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hey Bob, how is the six inches holding up on the roads?
Oh, good.
Yeah, 'cause I, I remember, remember we were gonna go seven one time?
What are you talking about? Hot dog?
Yeah.
Are you crazy?
It was your idea.
Five inches is plenty. It's the base. That's the most important thing, the gravel base.
Bob, no, it's, that's... No, I got that, it was your idea.
No, that's the big thing, is the gravel.
No, I've, I've never pushed six or seven inches on a top.
You get, you get six here.
And I don't know how that got in there. Five is enough, two and three, as long as you got twenty inches of gravel.
Okay, so that's holding up?
I hear he's putting forty inches of gravel in home park, when, when he do that, right?
Slow, sixty...
Six inches especially is plenty, as long as I got the eight and twelve of gravel.
Is there a fire road on the way out of there on the backside? And did we ever get the fire chief approval?
We got the letter from the fire chief, yes.
He wants it...
It says he shall sign off, but I don't see it.
He wants it treated as a hydrant.
He, he wants the what?
He wants that sister treated like a hydrant.
Oh, like a hydrant, okay.
Yeah, you know, clean the snow in front of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I went over with him one day, so...
Okay.
That'll be the second one in town.
Did he submit that letter here?
Yeah, they had one too. They had a copy. I asked Jim to look at his, did you ever look at your email?
No, I, I never got an email on that. I didn't.
So the fire chief did send a letter and sign on?
That's what he said.
Yeah, 'cause I met with him on something else for, for my place, for the highway garage. And he says, oh, I already sent it over. And he told me, he says, I wanted it treated like a hydrant.
Yeah.
So what we gotta...
That makes total sense, I was just wondering if you forgot.
What I'd like to do, I'd like to see them put that, this, the Siamese, the suction tube closer to the sidewalk than the other one, the one that's existing on SD Way.
Yep.
A little closer.
Um, should record sidewalks, both sidewalks.
That's something you could do in the field.
Okay, and we only waived the sidewalk on that little, little section here? Yeah, I see it, thank you. And then they're gonna put the sidewalk in all the way up on the other side, right?
Right.
Okay. I mean, right out to, up that, right?
Bobby, with the fire chief on that letter, I mean, if he saved it, I mean, he should be a little part of it.
I'm gonna see him anyway this week.
Okay, all right.
Because we're doing some, something else, but...
I'm trying to get this zoning bylaw finally ready to hold a hearing, because it's just moved on a little bit too long at this point, as far as I'm concerned, but...
All right, let's close the hearing.
Okay, make a motion to close the meeting.
So motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, vote unanimously, aye. We're done.
Jim, this is a copy.
Awesome.
This is a signed copy.
You ready to go off?
Yeah. The, um...
That's a signed copy for us, you know.
All right, now, what about the one...